No, 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 no.
We build on how to record 101.
Put it on the internet.
Oops, sorry.
What do we know about this?
Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Yeah. Okay. Okay, at 7:00 PM, I'm calling the meeting to order. David, Sean, Steve, and I are here. Kirk isn't yet. It's a special meeting for two items which are on the agenda. There are no public comment hot times or anything. But before we start, I'd like to introduce the new director of the Northwoodby Park and Recreation District, Mr. Frank Gino Wolf. Gino is recently retired from the Navy after a long and illustrious career. He and his family have been resident on Northwoodby Island since 1998, although Gino's been away on duty from time to time. Gino brings extensive leadership and management skills to the position, and extensive experience in legal processes. Over the last few weeks, he's been getting acquainted with the operations of the district, and I for one am delighted with the direction he has taken. Please welcome Gino. Now you're in. It's okay. Okay, first item of business. Kirk has arrived. Okay, first item of business is the Wonky Pump. I wanna see, I wanna see how they spell it.
How did you say that, the Wonky?
The Wonky Pump.
That's awesome.
So who's going to speak to? You've got some bids?
Yes, you should have a four you, you should have three bids. The first one is from...
Delta Industries?
All right, Delta Industries is the lowest bid that I've got. And they work directly with the manufacturer of the pump we have now. They have, and what we'll be getting for this pump is a pump, a motor, ready to put in, back in its place, what we have.
Is it a complete unit?
It's a complete unit, yes.
And they would install it?
No.
You'll install it?
Yes.
How, do you have help to do that? These are also pretty big operations, so it's...
Yes.
Is it a significant cost to install it?
To install it?
Yes.
It'll be about, probably about four or five hours to install it.
Does it pull out the shut down during that time?
No. As long as we get turnover, our six turnover will be all right. And right now, we're running, we're running just eight turnovers. Do you know what, do you understand what a turnover is?
No, I was about to ask.
A turnover is how much water we run through the filter.
Okay.
And they, they, the way they put it is in gallons for each turnover. And we're, you know, we're a little over 20,000 pool with our, with our side pool. And we're running about eight turnovers right now. So, so if I can get within the five hours, under five hours, we will still meet our six, and we'll still be all right with it.
Okay, so the pump has to turn it over so, the pool water over so many times?
Yes, yes.
And we're required by the health department then to make six a day?
Yes.
And we're currently at eight?
Yes.
And if we do the repairs under four hours, that'll still allow us to make our six per day and keep it in, okay. Got to keep it simple.
Another question. On that day, could we started at 5:00 and come in late that day? Start at 5:00, that way if it went over the five hours, the pool would be closed anyway.
The only problem with that is it might be, you know, we might be late, and we may need something in the store that's closed.
Well, well, there you go.
And that kind of, you know, that's one of those...
That's a good point.
It's one of those catch 22s that we'll, we'll face.
Could we pick it on a day where it would affect the least amount of people?
Well, see, I was thinking maybe a Saturday, Saturday morning, because I know we'll have businesses open that we can get parts from if we need them.
That's a great idea.
That's what I was thinking.
All right, so follow-up question to that. Going back to how much water we're required and mandated to circulate, if we're currently cir, if we're currently turning over water eight times in a 24-hour period, and we're required to turn over six?
Yes.
Not suggesting we lower that down, but would that increase the longevity of the pump system?
Well, I'll set it up with the next one. It's better to do more than, than at six. At six, it's, your water quality goes down.
Sure.
And that's the reason we're at eight. We want our quality, you know, our, our better water, you know, we want it better than just, you know, kind of average.
It also has some direct impact on how much we're heating and spending for gas for the pool also?
Not really.
Okay, so that's something.
The only, the only part that that actually does is when we clean and go through the filters, the filter bed and all that stuff. That's when we start getting more heat, more stuff.
Okay.
Between six and eight, that is not that much.
Okay. So second, follow-up question to that. What is the expected life, what is the life expectancy of this new unit?
The new unit, you know, they don't warranty period. They, they, you know, they've run through a lot of, a lot of stuff. I really wish that the pump that we put in was properly preserved and, you know, stored correctly, because we were, we got our 10- to 20-year lifespan out of it. And the reason I'm saying 10 years is because our chlorine water and stuff like that, it's really hard on the pumps. Now, the estimate that we have for the pumps is the next step up. It's the stainless steel turbines, stainless steel shafts. And it, it even goes here as the 316 stainless steel bolts. It's all done out, and it's a better pump than actually what we have now.
So is it, is it expected you still have the same 10, 10- to 20-year lifespan?
Well, I say 10, 20, because...
As the economy model, if you will?
I'm, I'm just estimating. It could, like, it could last 20 years, probably no problem. But I'm saying, and...
You know what's our current pump on?
Huh?
How long, how old is our current pump?
How old? It's not even two years old.
But that's a thing that's set out there.
Yeah, it, it's set in storage since 2004.
Unsecured, uncovered.
Unreserved.
Unreserved.
So the packing wasn't, the packing wasn't done right? You have dry seals, you had dry gaskets. And so we put a pump out there that was ready to fail two years ago?
Exactly.
So you bought something and left it outside, so you could tell?
Exactly, exactly. It was bought and, and just...
With these three bids, then what we have is we have the same pump, same specifications in three cases, the three bids that your...
Yes, yes. Now, the...
$50,000 one.
Yeah, the $50,000 one is an actual different company. It's a, it's a different, a different pump. It's not the Flowway like we have now. It's a different company of pump. It's, it's still the same, you know, it's apples for apples.
But it uses aluminum.
Yeah, aluminum connector.
Connector. But I see the other two is brass, which is much better.
Yeah.
So I, $50,000 one, crap here.
Exactly.
Is that for the record?
It's not, that, that's the only difference between, between the pumps. Exactly.
I'm paying, I'm paying more for aluminum than I am for brass.
Right.
The pumps are the same.
Pumps are the same, motors are the same.
And both are, are pump only, no installation?
Yes. Well, yes, yes, yes. No one's installed.
Okay, now there's $300 difference between the Delta Industries and the Triangle Pump Equipment.
Yes, the Triangle Pump Equipment is out of Woodinville. They're, they're, I wanna say they're, they're kind of, both companies are the same from what I, from what I've got. The Flowway, or the, what is it, Tri, is an actual, it's just a pump that we're able to buy from. The other one actually is a, is off of the manufacturer. And that's the reason they can do it for $300 cheaper.
Yeah, but it means that you've got a box, and you'll have to put the box in, or is...
Both of them are, are...
Are they both just send us a box?
Both of them are the same. Exactly, yeah.
So, the, the two low bids at 15,000?
Yes.
The two low bids came in under 16,000 for the exact same model?
Yes.
For the same unit?
Same, exactly.
And the third bid at $50,000 is a completely different unit?
Exactly. Yeah, it's...
I think we get one bid out of the way pretty good.
I'll ask you guys a question.
But one is from...
It got brought up here in the past few months by a concerned citizen, by the past director, that bids needed to be similar. I mean, are we going to, are we going down a road where one of the three pumps, the bids on the pumps, isn't even the same kind of pump? And that's why it's so significantly higher? Do we have to have three bids of the same pump? Does that make sense?
We have three of the same pump, basically, three bids.
The, the pumps do the same pump.
Comparable models, doesn't have to be the exact, doesn't have to be the exact same model.
You don't understand, though, because it was brought up, and I want to take that serious.
Yep, absolutely.
But the 50,000, like we talked earlier, it's, it's the aluminum thing, so it's, it's cheaper. It does the same thing as the other two.
All right, okay. It's just a different manufacturer.
I just wanted to, you know, bring it up, make sure we're...
That's a good point, yeah.
Now, the $50,000 pump will take 20 weeks to be done and hopefully get here. The other two will take 10.
So they're, they're both at 10 weeks?
10 weeks.
That's the two cheaper. The 60, the 116.
Yeah, the, the two Flowways.
They're cheaper.
I got a question?
Yep.
Says prices do not include shipping?
No, does not include shipping.
So how much is it? Because one's from Fresno, and one's from...
They'll, they'll both be probably shipped from Fresno to, to the companies, and then we'll go from there.
So how much more is in the process for shipping?
That I do not know, and they couldn't give me an estimate.
Because 10 weeks, gas prices will change, or?
I don't know.
What's the weight of these?
Is there a weird chetel?
You're probably looking at a good 500 pounds.
5,000 bucks for shipping.
Probably is.
I guess it still beats 50,000.
And 20 weeks.
We just let you go to Fresno, take it out.
Woo, all right, bro.
We still have the opportunity to take that one out and get it back to the manufacturer.
And rebuild it.
And rebuild it. They won't, we won't be able to get a price until they get the actual thing.
And then what do you use in the interim?
It would be...
No, 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 no.
Get this in.
We purchase a new one, get it in, and then the old one, instead of...
I like that.
Turns into scrap. If we, you know, we can...
Preserve it properly.
Thank you, yes, and we have it back up in case something happens. But, but yeah.
Let's store it better and secure it better.
Yeah, stored, staying up. Preserve it like it's supposed to.
Is there any advantage, Matt, that I don't? See, if, if one is 15.3 and one's 15.6, is the, does the 15.6 have an advantage to it that isn't obvious here, like?
Obviously not. They're, they're both...
Just the same?
They are, I get...
And same, same sort of support for it?
Yes. Because it's still, tho, those two bids are the Flowway pump. They're actually...
Can I ask one question? One's from Woodinville?
Yes.
One's from Portland?
Portland.
So if we needed somebody to come up and look at it?
We could probably have...
It would be cheaper cost to the good person. Wouldn't really come out.
Exactly. That would...
And that's what Matt recommends.
Okay, okay.
Is there any impact on warranties for... Do you mean...
Essentially, the, the warranty on the pump we installed ourselves versus having a supplier...
You know, that, that, there probably is. If you have a supplier probably install it, they will probably, you know, they'll be able to warranty it better, I would say, but you know...
Well, the cost difference, then, and would be worth it, for the questions.
I don't know. You know, I've...
I just, I know, I mean, as long as they're happy, it's not rocket science.
No, it's, and the Flowway is pretty much just drop in, bolt out, and go on. So, yeah, it depends on, I guess, on everything. I, I don't know. I know the, I guess we give the pumps to put it in, since they're here to use. They may install this, we install this last. But that's, you know, that's install.
I know, I know, I know I'm just on board with talking to Matt, telling you. We need to get this thing as soon as possible.
Quite agree with that.
And I would love to have a decision made to get this done.
We don't have the luxury of...
Time.
Time.
Our, our time is running.
So your feeling is that the $300 extra from the Woodinville one is preferable because of potential service and working with it? So you're recommending the 15.69, which is the Woodinville bid?
Yes.
If we had a motion to either that or something else, we can...
Build the same way with Gina?
Oh, definitely. Need to get done, I'm on board.
Just want to leave the warranty.
I can have a check tonight.
Take you up on that.
That's why you're right, you're right too. We'll get, we'll get, we'll double up, that'll spare. Ready, ready?
Does the pump, does the pump have the capacity to, that we extended this place to recover, to push more water, we'd have to get another pump?
Actually, what I, what we do is get another pump, but it would only service that pool.
So they look after the heat differences as well?
The heat, actually, what, the way we do it is that pool would be on its own system, its own pump, its own heater, its own everything.
And then we'd keep the others at 78.
So I would make a motion that we would proceed with purchasing the pump from Triangle Pump and Equipment, and for the $15,690, minus the shipping and handling charges to receive that pump.
Proceed with purchasing the pump for 15,690, plus shipping and handling?
Well, we'll need to pay the shipping and handling, minus the shipping and handling charges. We'll have to pay that on that.
But they'll be in addition to the 15?
Yeah, correct.
So that what we'd be doing is we'd be doing 15, we'd be authorizing 15,690, plus...
Plus the shipping and handling charges, yes, that's true.
Shipping.
Thank you.
Handling and installation, I would say?
That's only Matt, not I. That's only Matt, not I.
Am I writing installation or not?
I would go ahead. We're ready to write it, so we had 15,600.
Steve moves that we proceed with purchasing the pump for 15,690, plus the shipping, handling, and installation charges. Is there a second there?
From Triangle Pump and Equipment.
From Triangle Pump and Equipment. I'm just trying to read this loud enough that it gets onto the table. Okay, is there a second there?
A second?
Okay, Steve, Dave.
And I have another question.
Okay.
It's about these, these prices, 15,690 and/or 15,390. Does that include applicable taxes? Washington State taxes? For example, if we purchased this pump out of Woodinville, we're gonna pay Washington State tax.
Yes.
Does that include that price?
As far as I understand, yes.
It does say that this price does not include shipping, but does not mention taxes at all?
Yeah, well, the gentleman that I talked to was, he went, he told me was, it covered everything.
Taxes, whatever.
Except shipping. So I'm under the impression that it does cover the taxes.
That's a fair lack of money, because if it's 11%, is it?
It's about 10%.
That's, you know, that's 1,500 bucks. And Portland doesn't have a sales tax.
Yes, but they are selling to someone in Washington, so I'm sure...
We'd have to...
They'd have to pay the Washington State sales tax, 6.2%, I wonder. But it's not the full county taxes on top of that. So keep it in state. So maybe we need to amend the motion to, to include the price of the pump at 16... No, sorry, 15,690, plus taxes if, if applicable.
I'm glad I wrote this down. Okay. I'll read all of this again if there's afterward. Is there any other discussion on that part?
So I'll second the amended motion.
Well, Steve accepted it, so it's a friendly motion, so we don't have to do that. It just gets changed. Okay, do you want me to read it again, and then see?
Sure.
Okay. Proceed with purchasing the pump at 15,690, plus taxes if applicable, plus shipping, handling, and installation charges from Triangle Pump and Equipment. Is that...
Installation.
Yeah. I've got it all here, I'll give it to you. If you read my hand, right? Okay, time for the question? Everybody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That's the first item of business. Now, where that comes from in the budget? You've agreed or suggested that that comes out of the reserve fund?
75, 6... 75,000... 75,000, 6, 8, 9, 34.
Is that acceptable to everybody if it's drawn out of the reserve fund? Since our budget doesn't look like we can handle it in the normal items.
Right now, going over the budget. Yeah, it's handled. It's funny, I, I don't know what the reserve fund was originally set up to. I don't think I've read the resolution on that reserve fund as far as what it was designed to...
Well, as I tell you in practice, a long, long time ago, when we had, when the budgets were things that you could sort of follow piece by piece by piece, we were putting money into the reserve fund to handle one year's operations on the levy side, should a levy fail, so that we could take it to, to keep the pool open to the next levy. And that was it. And that's what our, that's what our ideal was. We didn't really make it, but that's what we tried for.
Even if you do this, there's still a lot left in reserve.
Yes, but it's a matter that, you know, when we're starting to dip into the reserve, we'll have to take a look at the budget and see.
We understand that. We've been...
They've been down now.
Have we? Yeah, okay.
This is number two.
Okay.
Now, does this, does this require a resolution?
I think it, at least if we, we could have a resolution. I think we'd be tidy with one. Because if we have a resolution, it's the authority to do it.
Is that something we can do as the next rate of our meeting?
Or we could do it right now?
The actual resolution? We have to have a number?
Well, yeah, we gave, okay.
We'll have to get the number for the next resolution, we have to...
Okay, so that means that you can proceed with this, and then on May 15th, I guess, if we can get a real number, we'll withdraw that from the reserve fund, or give a resolution to withdraw that from the reserve fund. So that, does that sound acceptable to you guys?
Yes. And, and a couple of questions I have.
Answers questions.
Wait another two weeks?
No, 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 you go ahead right now, it's done.
That's what I'm saying, just get it started now.
Yeah, yeah, you're, you guys are going now. It's just a matter for the authority out of the reserve fund that...
That our eyes...
I just want to make sure we can... Go now.
Yes, you, you got that, man.
We're laptop, send button.
Okay, next item on the agenda is discussion of investment-grade audit. I haven't got any background, so you'll have to...
All right, so it was Thursday, the April, the Thursday in April. It was a Thursday directly following our commissioners' meeting.
So the 24th.
Which was the 17th, so the 24th, Thursday the 24th. We met with, you're gonna have Joe Sol. Joe Sol, and from the Department of Enterprise Services, who explained, we took a tour of the pool. He explained how the process works, and what, what we could expect in regards to the investment-grade audit, what happens after the investment-grade audit, the types of resources that the state typically can allocate if we are approved for a grant, other grant sources, we discussed alternative grant sources that would count towards our end of financing for the proper... For the improvements we're, we're looking to make. We're looking to improvements that would save us energy costs, lights, gas, general power, and I imagine water usage. And, and, and controls, because right now, we're not operating with controls. Our control is Matt. Matt and his tennis shoes. Excuse me. It is, after listening to the presentation, and maybe Bill and Matt can, and me and Gino, because all three were there, can help fill in the blanks. It is of this commissioner's opinion, so take it as that, that we are in a position where we need to move forward with the investment-grade audit. We don't really have the funding available to just leave the pool in its current status quo. We're going to grossly exceed our, our natural gas usage in our budget, just on that one line item. And that's only for 2014. We exceeded it in 2013. And I can only see that getting, getting worse. The idea behind the investment-grade audit is that it gives us a baseline and a guaranteed energy savings that we're gonna be going for. That's a guarantee. As such, if we don't, if, after the improvements are made, we don't achieve that guarantee, we receive money back to compensate for the investments and its failure to reach the plateau or the potential that, that we were promised. The investment-grade audit is 9,300 and... I have it here somewhere. Yes, the investment-grade audit is, is between 9,300 and 9,400 dollars. I'll be able to give you a, a good number here in a minute. And again, I would recommend going forward with it.
So, what I'm hearing you saying is, we get this audit, if they can, is that they have to prove after the completion of the audit that we will actually have a certain percentage of savings, energy savings, before we're committed to go forward with the construction phase or whatever they recommend. And they're gonna come here and assess everything first. It's gonna cost us the 9, 400.
If I didn't hear him right, we're gonna pay, have people come to tell us how much we're in trouble with expenditures on energy and...
Lights.
And so on, and lights and so on. And if they aren't right, if we get money in here, they'll pay us back some of the 9,400 dollars. ninety four hundred dollars we paid to get the audit.
You may get that back with the grant, once they start doing that, right?
Could you run through that for me, so that I understand?
The way I understand it, the ninety-three, ninety-four hundred kicks off the process. Part of the process is the audit. So the audit comes in, and they look at our windows, our lights, our heating system, our controls, everything where we're spending instead of three thousand or six thousand dollars a month on natural gas. And they, they not only look at it, but they put together a fix. This is the best way forward. Not only do they put together the fix, but they also look at the grant writing for how to come up with the money to help us achieve that, what the total goal's gonna be at the end. So they look at our weaknesses, they figure out what we need to do to fix it, they come up with the total cost, and they come up with a plan to fix it. And from that plan, after that step, that's when we apply for the grant. Now, the ninety-four hundred also goes into the grant writing process, because the gentleman that was here the first night, stop me if I'm wrong, the gentleman that was here the first night, can't remember his name, Brainfard or Foster, thank you, is the gentleman who will be assigned to help us with this, and he does the grant writing, so we don't have to worry about bringing in a technical writer or anybody else to do the grant writing process. He'll take it from there, and he's bonded by the state, which is very important. He's bonded by the state to, A, look at everything. We don't have to go out for three bids, because this is a state process. And they also know the alternative grants that are available to help us come up with our two-to-one, two-to-one matching. Remember, the big part in this is, through the one program, the...
The ESCO.
The S...
The ESCO.
Yeah. ESCO process, it's a two-to-one. They put up one part, the state does through the grant process, and we come up with the two-part, right? So if it's, say it's a two thousand dollar, two hundred thousand dollar project, cost, we've gotta come up with two parts of that, they're gonna come up with one part of that in their grant. However, our two parts can be taken out from other grants, like a PG&E grant, a, you know, something else that's local. And they'll also help us with that too, correct?
And that may be included, we may get that ninety-four, ninety-two...
By no means am I saying on record that it's gonna be a two hundred thousand dollar project. I wanna say that real quick.
You're doing a good job of explaining it.
So...
You are. What we do get when it's, if we are selected for grants and we decide to move forward, is there's a cap on the maximum the project will cost. Any overages is picked up by the ESCO. There's guaranteed energy savings that they're aiming for, and that we can expect to see on a monthly basis or yearly basis as we go through our budget, and they're going to guarantee the performance of the equipment.
That's once the whole job is done.
Yes.
Okay, now, I have a real problem, and I think we have a crisis in the electronic controls, that you're trying to make work manually without the software going. Will that be part of the...
Yes, yes. That, windows, lights, we have stuff in the back that'll be covered.
It's comprehensive. They look at everything.
Yeah, they look at everything.
I'm just thinking that if the pump's a crisis, your electronic software stuff is just about the same crisis, but that's your living day by day, but the things may not be working as efficiently as they could.
Exactly.
And I'm sort of worried about that.
Yes, if, if one, if we chose to go through the investment grade audit, let's say, for example, the very minimum scope would be to repair the controls.
Do we have a choice at the end then?
A choice of phasing the project. So we could go for both, we could go just the controls themselves, it's really up to the district.
We can scale the project.
To choose the scope of it.
Yeah, we talked to Bellevue and the Johnson, they're going through this process right now, and the company, when they did their assessment, gave them thirteen...
Thirteen different options.
Thirteen different options. And they brought it down to four. And they're gonna start, they're having their constructor, their meeting, attendant of month here, they're gonna start working on their construction in June, and we're gonna get back with them in June. Right now, it's not just, you're gonna have this one thing, and you're stuck with that. They give you all kind of options, how to improve things. You don't have to do every one of them. It's just, they're giving us recommendations, what to do, and what to improve.
So if we end up proceeding with this, and, you know, to prove the audit, would this be in time to apply for that money in September? Because that's the window for it.
Yeah, even Bellevue, they were talking, even, they were running, they started this in January, and they were running on time, but this, this company helped them out very much, and they got those grants. They got those things, they were having to get through. We'd be able to get it done by September, we'd be able to be in that window, if we started.
And did I understand you correctly, if by some chance we choose to go down this road, and we apply for that grant in September, we don't get awarded that grant money, we can reapply, and there's gonna be more money in the spring?
Yes, correct. And we don't pay anything for the investment grade audit or any state costs if we're denied a grant.
You mean the ninety, we don't pay the ninety?
I don't even pay the ninety, no, that's what we're saying.
State takes about ten percent of the project.
That's a great point.
But if we don't get the grant...
It's a guarantee you'll get the one part from the state.
So they say anything about where the, what the source of the grant from the...
Yes, it's Department of Commerce. Department of Commerce, on the mark, you, Department of Commerce. And then PSE is another option.
Hopefully.
So maybe we can use PSE for matching for lighting, and I don't know what the details are on PSE themselves, but they are, they are a resource.
But that would count as part of our two thirds?
Um, I think so, I think so. PSE has a separate process, grant process, okay? But the ESCO, in this case, taking the energy system, would process the grant through PSE. Now, whether that's actually separate or whether that's bundled together, we don't answer that question, we really don't want to answer that.
My impression that that would count is towards our two thirds, our two points.
Yes, 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 that's the answer to that.
Right. And the only question, though, correct me if I'm wrong, is will the ESCO guy help us with the technical writing for the PSE?
Yes, he will.
Oh, he will?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, I thought he said like that. Didn't he make a comment like, you know, like, without going through, but he said it would be very safe to say it'd be a public, be looking at a twenty percent cost saving fuel. Did I hear that? I thought he made that comment, he like, like, I can't go on the record of saying this, but it would be safe to say.
Yes, he did, but, you know, we could always hope for more.
But I was just saying, if it were that, it's like fifteen thousand dollars, probably, and just...
It'll pay itself off over a couple of years, that's your point. And we'll better our facility for the next ten-plus years.
Exactly.
Yeah, I'll tell you, it's definitely gonna cost money to keep this place going. You've got a big Vanacor is cool, a big guy going on over there. That was almost disastrous. The whole balcony area is closed down now, not only up top but underneath. It's getting mad. And structurally, it's to that point to where they're having to reinforce it, and when you think of the disaster that could have happened, it's funny, you know, I mean, it's cost money to keep a place going, right?
Makes the speech system seem small.
So, Dave, do you have... So, Bill, you've been, you and Matt have been doing the most of the work on this. Do you know the figure for the investment grade audit? I apparently don't have that paper with me. Does anybody else have that in their notes? Because we will need that, that number to make the motion.
The other thing that we haven't talked about yet is that Nathan was really anxious to review any contracts, to make sure that the district had the capacity to enter that type of an agreement. I don't understand the issue. But is there something or other which is a long-term obligation that a public body couldn't go into?
I thought this is set up by the state, the way I understood it, this is set up by the state of Washington, specifically for public entities like, like special districts and municipal districts.
And so we could enter this... State really shouldn't be involved with this.
But I'm wondering, but we, so we can, there's no, there's no funny thing out there. I'm beginning to learn that the system's really complicated. And so we're not running into some sort of a problem with...
This comes from state and your agencies?
What's a... Wait. You just heard what he said. Worst-case scenario is we're out nine, ten thousand bucks. If we go proceed with this and decide to back out, is that right?
That's correct, yeah. If we decide to back out after the ten option, or whatever options we get.
Then it's us, then we, then we pay.
Then we pay the ninety-three.
I know grants, I know federal grants. They can have a lot of, oops, yeah, I'm... Right. And if it requires us to have matching funding sources, whether they be actual dollar matches or service, you know, great people that do work for an equivalent monetary value, sometimes that works for matching. So I'm just saying, as soon as you bring federal dollars in, Department of Commerce, EPA, whoever this source is that's trying to, you know, go green, basically, and that's okay, I think it's that. They, they want reports back, the state should be doing that, hopefully. They want progress reports, they, there's a lot of things you really have to look for in front of it. So that's, I'd love to see one of these grants that Bellevue has, just to get an idea of what the deliverables are, what they call them, what is required by the state and the sole...
The ESCO company and that gentleman that was here the first night, he's the one that takes care of, takes care, takes care of making sure that we meet everything for the federal monies. And he also makes sure we meet everything for the state monies. So...
They are, they're quite spun though with the state, so they, they have to make money.
That's correct.
They're trying to make money to stay afloat.
That's correct.
So they're, they do have some motives. Just, I wanna make sure that I understand why, it's not like they're just...
Sounds like us, makes us stay afloat. You know, there is included in that, in the project cost, the state keeps tabs on the project, not just how much did it cost, what was the overall outcome, whether or not we're meeting the projected savings, but they'll, they'll look at that for the first year and monitor it for the first year. And then they'll look at it in years two or three, under a different agreement, just to make sure that, again, that, that the work that we, we and they have paid for through grants is meeting the expectations that were promised to us.
But is the other agreement, like, if we do an agreement now, this, to get this going, is, what's the under another that we're...
They just, the Department of Enterprise Services is saying that the first-year measurement and verification is part of the project cost, that the measurement and verification in subsequent years are covered under a separate agreement authorized by the client. So we would have to authorize them to monitor it for years two and three.
How does this, how does this fit in with our, the long-term thought about expansion and the pool of the facility, possibly, what's the restrictions on us expanding after we do all these upgrades? They say all of a sudden we can't mess with what they made?
As long as we have to let them know of what our expansions are, and as soon as we do that, they will make the corrections on everything else.
Yeah, they'll project it out.
There's one thing that I'm becoming increasingly concerned about, I would need a commitment to approve it, and that is that, in my thinking, just talking about this, is there space and can you organize a completely separate file set, so that we keep all the documents on this thing in one place, so we can find it and it doesn't mess up by getting integrated into the rest of the pool or district documents? Like, even another filing cabinet or something?
Yeah, I can hide it, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you can hide it so that we can find it all at once, or throw it out all at once, you know, but as long as we have the complete documentation starting now, because this sounds like a lot of paper, and a lot of paper that we're gonna be called on to pull out for audits over the years. I'm just, you know, it's, this sounds like...
That's what I do with the company, for a part of my job is audit grants, and I'd look at the, these departments that get all these grants, and they're, of course, it's a county, so they're paranoid about findings, and, but, you know, they, there are some, I mean, once, once we spend the money, the money spent, it's not like we're gonna do it. But there's a lot of, there's possibly, we could have to give the money back if we're, I'm not, we're all in some guideline that they put in place, or federal funds especially.
But what's your assessment on how much paper work is this thing gonna generate?
I don't think so. As far as, but there is gonna be some requirements on our part that I would like to see before we commit.
And I think that's part of that initial audit. That's part of what the ninety-four hundred buys us. This is what we can expect from our part, and it also gives us the cost. You just said that Bellevue had eighteen quotes, eighteen different options, I'm sorry, not just quotes, eighteen different options, and they narrowed it down to the top four, the board did. So, you know...
I think you just have to be okay with, worst-case scenario, that we just say, now, we'll do it ourselves, or we'll look at other options, other than going through this particular program. Well, talking Bellevue, they had two other companies, and they weren't really impressed with them. One, they didn't get back to them, but the other one wasn't very good about going work. So, right now, the best option we have is this one. So we did go through, you know, we did talk about three different, two other companies on top of this.
You have to remember that this all started with a discussion on purchasing a new computer interface system, which would, which would have cost somewhere around five thousand dollars. But that would have only interfaced with what we currently have, which may have, may have provided some savings, it's hard to tell without, without us purchasing that. But our energy costs have dramatically increased in the past few years, not just in the amount that the utility companies are charging per cubic foot of gas or per kilowatt hour, but also in the amount we used. It appears our, our system is consuming far more than it has in the past, for whatever reason. That could be age of the equipment, it could be unknown variables, you know, in weather and temperature, but we did run for a significant amount of time with defective equipment in that back room. I don't know how that impacted us, whether or not having those heat exchangers in there would have increased our, our gas usage, but there's something going on back there that, that has. Bill, part of this ninety-three, nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars investment grade audit will be to assess what is going on back there. How can we fix that? How can we improve on that even? Because at the current rate we're going, we will not be open next year with the amount of money we're spending on gas. Gas alone, that's going to, that is, that's gonna, I mean, that's, that's destroying our budget, honestly, in addition to a bunch of other things that are destroying our budget. But I think I projected using, and knowing that it'll go down during the summer, but we spent seventy-seven hundred dollars last month on gas, seventy-seven twenty-four. And that was just for the one bill.
What do you think, Kirk? I don't care, Kirk, so I mean, at least pay him the money to have somebody who's an expert in the area that's looking at other facilities.
Sean, do you go, Sean?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, thank you, sir, that we approve... I'd like to make a motion that we approve, thank you, sir, that we approve $9,340 to proceed with the IES audit.
Seconded.
Integrity Energy Services.
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I wrote that down right. I'm trying to get an approximation of what we're moving. Okay. So, Sean has moved that we approved the $9,340 to proceed with the IES audit. Steve, you seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
It's passed unanimously.
Just for clarity, you might want to add, IES is the company, what they're producing is an investment grade audit, otherwise an IGA.
So, do you want to proceed with the IES investment grade audit?
Of course, I think that would be.
Is that what we understood that you said?
Yes.
I would probably use the word integrity energy services, just to make it clear what IES is.
And I would like to amend that to integrity energy services and investment audit, investment grade audit.
I'm glad I'm a mess naturally, I'd never figured this out otherwise. Okay. So, what you guys approved, and what you moved, and a seconded was, we approved $9,340 to proceed with the integrity energy services investment grade audit.
That's correct.
Is that, and that's what you all voted for?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's done.
One further thing, I know it's not on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, but Commissioner Walton has some disturbing news he discovered about yesterday. I don't know if we want to sidebar it with the director, since it's not on the agenda, but apparently.
Yeah, this can be a discussion that we just.
No, no, no.
I mean, it was brought to my attention that over the weekend, our website was directed to, now, so the question I have is, this is pulled off of the Google cache page?
Let's do this, let's do this slowly. You have added an item to the agenda. I don't know if I can do that for a special media. I don't know if I can do that to a special. We're doing it for discussion, not for action, okay? So, then you can do it. And it's a website.
So, really, just want to know, you know, obviously, you're aware of it, as other people, was this just a URL redirect, or was this actual intrusion into our system, where sensitive data could have been?
As far as I know, it's a URL.
I understand it was URL.
So, our system remained intact, other than somebody said, hey, we're going to point your website over here.
Yeah, and plain hours, I can use it.
And you can check just to be sure on that somehow?
Aaron, yeah.
Yeah, Aaron has already checked, checked with our IT guy, and he, that was all it was. He had it fixed within an hour.
Is there anything that we should do learning from this, so that it won't be serious next Maybe talk to the IT guy and see if there's anything. Either that or put that in a separate thing and have the rest of our operations.
Again, this is just, I mean, I pulled this off today. If you were to go to Google and search old harbor pool, first hit comes up with that description, you know, hacked by.
Yeah.
Hacked by. So, you know, and then you can pull down, and you can look at a cached page, you know, what does Google have as an image for your page? If it says this was cached on May 4th, the citizen that I spoke to said that it was up for a couple of days.
Yes, it was, we found it on Saturday, and by Monday, we had taken care of it.
Okay. And, you know, their concern was, had any patron employee information to get out there?
No.
From what they, yeah, from what Aaron told me, checking with the IT, no personal information.
On a personal side, was the chair notified that this had happened? I don't like being blindsided and not have answers to questions, you know, and then be like, oh, really? I have no idea. And so, you know, and I don't make it a daily chore to frequent the web page, just to see what it looks like, because it usually looks the same. But, you know, something like, something like that does spark, raise a couple of questions and.
Well, I think the answer is, thank you for bringing it up tonight. We have a regular meeting on May 15th, it was put on the agenda on May 15th, and if you guys could find out if we need to do something, need to do something to protect the system in case something like this happened again, or not, you know? And no, I wasn't informed.
No, and I think that's the whole point, you weren't informed.
Yeah, but the return is that it could only help a little bit if I was informed, because I wouldn't know what it was all about anyways, but I could ask Dave. I'll make a motion to your.